Yeah, I'd like to nominate Shirley.
All in favor?
Okay, that's great.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the pre-meeting development workshop. Today is, what is today, the ninth?
Ten.
The tenth. Today is Tuesday, March the tenth, year twenty twenty. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. If you'd stand, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Howell, we are ready to hear from our presenters. If you would please invite them to the podium. Gentlemen, go ahead and take the podium. Ms. Howell is ready.
Come on up.
Don't we do the additions and additions first?
No.
We'll do that in a little while.
We're just in the pre-meeting.
We're good. He's here.
Well, here he comes.
So, good afternoon. I'm Michael Wong. I'm the president of Carolina Chinese Chamber of Commerce. So, I'm very happy to be here today to present a very great proposal of building the Asian culture and commerce center in Indian Trail. I think this is a great opportunity to increase the economic growth along with the quality life in the local community. In addition, this will be a very good Carolina Asian community home. Before I start, I just wanted to take a moment to give a brief introduction of our Carolina Chinese Chamber of Commerce. So, our chamber actually was created seven years ago. Our mission is to promote the economic, culture, and educational exchange between Carolinas and China. Our members actually is across the Carolinas, not only the North Carolina, but the South Carolina as well. We have about over a hundred members, organization, and members across the twenty above industries. The members' annual revenue combined together over one billion dollars. There are three piece of the member base. The first member base is the local American companies that doing the business with China, Chinese-related business. That included the big law firms like the Moore v. Allen, and also the accounting firms like the Career Worker, and also the governments as well. I'm very honored to say that the Department of South Carolina Commerce Department actually is our member as well, and also the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina also is our member. So, they are doing more the business related to China. The second group of people is the Chinese-American business owners and entrepreneurs. They cross the different industry, and also we have the members that are the companies listed in NASDAQ, and also the first generation of the entrepreneurs which come to the United States, only have like five thousand dollar, and they start their business currently, they have over a hundred million revenues in their company. So, this group of the people represented the professionals, business owners, that is the core of our chamber. The third group of the people actually is the companies originated from China, and they come to United States for their business, and that including the big firms like the China Mobile, along with those entrepreneurs that wanted to expand their business in United States. Some is the manufacturing companies, some is come here to do the investments. So, we have this three group of people who are combined together, have a great network that can learn from each other, success together. So, and we also have a very good relationship with the different governmental organizations in the city level, the state level, and the federal level as well. For example, we visited the North Carolina governors on the regular schedule, talk about the business, how we can help them to grow the Chinese business in South Carolina. And we also talked with the U.S. Senator Tom Tillis, talk about the immigrations, and also the trade dispute between China and the United States. And actually, for this coming March, we were having annual celebration. Both of them recorded the video to congratulate our accomplishment, how we helped to promote the economic and the culture exchange between Carolinas and China. So, overall, that I think that we are a chamber that wanted to have a place to promote the culture and economic exchange. And to be honest, that it's really an opportunity that Tom Tillis office called me like the, maybe like the last December? Yeah, last October, and talk with me say, hey, there's an opportunity that in Indian Trail, they tried to solicit some of the good partners to build investment project surrounding the town hall, especially close to the light rail. Would you be interested in talk with them? And I think this is a great opportunity for us to connect, and thank you for the leadership from Gary, and also the town leaders as well. We had a very great discussion, and eventually we come out this idea, we wanted to build this Carolina Asian Culture and Commerce Center in Indian Trail. And to be honest, Asian population in Carolinas is about six to seven percent. We represent a very big core group of the people that contributed to the growth of the economy. And diversity and inclusion is what make Americans strong. So, it's our responsibility is that we wanted to preserve and also promote this kind of heritage, and building this type of the center here in Indian Trail, I think serves that purpose. So, let me just start with the proposal. The reason why we want to build this center here in Indian Trail, as I just spoke, is that we wanted to bring the culture diversity and promote the economic development in this As you can understand that if we have a center here, it's not only create a certain type of the job with this center, but also this is the symbol for the Asian Americans, that they view this place as a home, and we will bring more those kind of investment, not only from, like the country from China, India, but also will also concentrate a lot of the talents from the Asian business community. So, again, that I think that will serve the purpose. The other is that we wanted to serve as the community art performance facility, bring the quality lifestyle and programs in this community. Indian Trail has been developing very, very quick, quickly, and there are a lot of the people actually move from all over the country, some is from the north, and they are missing a lot of the culture elements of their life. And when I talk with Gary and other people here, and it feel like it's a very big need is that we will build a community art or performance center, so bring more culture to this place. The other piece is that we wanted to also set up the educational hub with the Asian focus. This would be a place that people come here to learn the Asian culture, that's many of the Asian cultures, as you know, and like the paintings, calligraphy, or the others like the cookings, all those things that I think that if we have a place can collect all those elements in a center, and also in Indian Trail, that will be very great. The other piece is that we also wanted to bring the authentic Asian cuisine to the local area, and that's one of the things that the city council member and also Gary told me that they are missing some of the delicious Asian food here, and they don't have a sit-down type of the upscale restaurant here. So, I think that this actually is the advantage that our chamber has. We have so many of the restaurant owners, and they are very good at bringing the authentic Asian food to this place. And also, we wanted this would be the community activity center as well, to serve the local community. This including some of the, like the town hall meeting, like HOA meetings, it could be some of the social gathering, the birthday party, along with the weddings as well. So, this will be a place serve all these needs. Also, this will be the, we hope this will be the landmark of this town, along with this beautiful town hall together. When people think about Indian Trail, they will immediately think about this area, the town hall, along with the Asian center. Of course, that we also wanted to increase the quality density around this future Indian Trail light rail station. And I imagine that I have the imagery that some of the older ladies, they will take the train, come to this center, and then have so much fun together with their older buddies. So, a quality of love is also something that we wanted to bring by building this center. So, with that, I just wanted to briefly talk about the general design principles that we have for this center. First of all, we wanted this to be the environmentally friendly, and we will surely use low-carbon input materials and the system. And we have very famous architects today here as well, they will talk about the details about the design. Also, just a brief introduction, they have been working with a lot of the architect firms, and Mr. Xu actually also own an architect firm, and Mrs. Xu actually is a professor in UNCC, which is in the architect department as well, and they will talk about more about their credential later on. The other piece that we wanted the external design to stay the neutral, but upscale, and also branded with the overall settings. And we do believe that this architect of the town hall is very nice, and we wanted to be complimentary to each other and have a very nice blended effect. We don't want this to be very exotic, although this was the Asian feature, but more is that in the interior design, that we wanted this to incorporate the Asian elements, and also have the flexibility for the future change as well. Another principle is that we wanted this to be integrated thing that among this two main complex and the small lake in between. So, the pond, right now it's called the pond, but eventually we will do a lot of the nice things landscaping to make it a very upscale lake, and the thing itself will be more upbeat and also will be very upscale as well, have a lot of the modern elements, which I think Mrs. Xu will talk about it. So, I will just pause here and have Mrs. Xu to continue regarding the design side. And before she come to the stage, if there's any questions, please let me know.
Okay.
Okay, so, I think there are, yeah, a little bit of overlapping information in terms of the, in terms of the what programs we will go to which facilities. So, I will flip these slides because I kind of resort out the information in a way that I can deliver the information a little more clear way. Okay, so, again, I'm Kyung Ee Kim, founding principal at the Hoey Kim Design Architecture in Charlotte. I'm also teaching at UNC Charlotte, Associate Professor of Architecture at UNC Charlotte. Just before introducing our scheme, I'd like to brief you on our background. So, both my husband, who is also founding principal, and I studied architecture at the University of Michigan, and we moved to New York City and practiced over decades, and we came to Charlotte, and he run his own solo practice along with me, and I also are holding a professor position here. So, this is kind of a brief our background. And then Yaushan Hai, he had, he has license, licensed architect in the state of North Carolina and New York City, while I'm practicing, practicing architect in New York, sorry, the North Carolina. Okay, for the site, as you are aware that our site is located in a complex where there are many programs. So, first of all, to the north, there is a sports complex, and to the north and east side, there are proposed apartment and town hall, and then also in the east side, there is also proposed single family houses. To the farther north, there is also zone for the industrial programs, and to the west, more extent of the residential zone, and to the south, there is also clusters for the business. So, in all, we found that our site has easy accessibility by highway and light rail and airport, and also it is intersection of different programs such as residential, business, and industry sectors, and also it is situated in a nice landscape that we need to integrate with the landscape, and that it has a well-established infrastructure that we think will become a benefit to develop a proposal to this site. So, vision of the project has three terminology or three keywords, nature, prosperity, and culture. One of the vision is that make sure, vision of the project is to make sure that nature is harnessed to create spaces that are functional, sustainable, and resilient. So, in other words, we want to cool exist with the nature, our built environment is make sure that, you know, beneficial to each other. We also promote the prosperity, such that creating a place for business growing and prosperity at the neighborhood and the broader community. And finally, we like to enrich the experience and education of the cultural heritage for generations to come. So, keep these three words in our mind. We develop also a mission of the project. So, there are, I think, seven, yeah, seven mission. So, one is together educate, work, dine, inspire, relax, and shop. And there, and then the, under this each mission, we come up with the programs, so which we skip the slides in the earlier Michael Wong's slide. So, together, we are proposing four hundred seats, world-class performance halls, and along with the multifunctional spaces that can house the wedding ceremonies or the conventions and so on. We like to also offer two primary educational programs. One is daycare center, quality brand, and the other one is the culinary arts, along with the library. And also, we like to offer a class A office spaces. So, again, we serve as a hub for the economic prosperity, and the dine, the local international cuisines and culinary arts programs will enhance the experience about the different cuisine and different international foods. Inspire, we like to offer gallery and museum, again, as a place to exchange the cultural diversity and house and encourage those activities. Spa, acupuncture, and oriental medicine could also serve as a place for people to relax. And finally, and not the least, we like to also offer the international like food market that people can come and shop. So, those are the primary programs. So, because we have a water feature in the middle of the site, we kind of split the whole site into two sites where we can, each area can house the program. So, the facility A is the place near the town hall, and there will be a performance hall, and the daycare center, and the museum, and library. And then to the east side, the left side, right side of the water feature, there will be the culinary arts, along with the shopping, the food market, and the office, and the restaurant. So, roughly, this is still not finalized yet, and we envision that the facility A, which is close to this town hall, will be around fifty thousand square foot, such that, you know, the volume is very similar to the volume of this town hall. And then the other facility B will be around eighty thousand square foot, so because also the slope, and then the slightly bigger volume can balance out the presence of two So, I, I'm not going to go through the, this one, but this explains how we come up with the each program's square footage requirements based on the programs we want to house. So, with this, the vision statement, and also the mission of the proposal, we also came up with a few design orientation or design strategies for the building. So, first of all, we want to make sure that our building is aesthetically pleasing. As Mr. Wong explains, we want to respect the locality, locality, and also, you know, to respect the, like, the culture of the Asian, but, but we also want to make sure that it looks global or international, and also make sure that it has a practicality. And the second design orientation is that we want to promote a place that can encourage the public engagement. So, we will allocate a lot of public space, people can freely use the space. And third, just make sure that the space is organized in a way that encourage the diversity and connectivity and inclusion. Interaction and discovery is also another design strategies we are keeping in mind, along with the future growth, and then for in preparation of the, you know, different use in future of the building, we want to design a system or space that it is adaptable for the different future needs. And then the resource conservation and the on-site renewable energy production, we aim to make our building to be nearly net zero energy, meaning that it consume energy in a way that it is, it is very minimum uses, but in the meantime, the somehow the on-site energy production can offset energy consumption used by the building. So, this is also one of our sustainable goal, and then the systems, sustainable systems integration. Okay, so, we've been working on this proposal a few, a few months, and then we came up with also a few, we call concept design, and then we are presenting only one of three concept design that we've been working on. So, this is one of the three concepts, and which we, I'm gonna present only one concept today to you. It is called uplift. And we take the inspiration from the trees, they are pruned, and I made some statements, and I'm gonna read, read the script here to explain the concept. So, the design concept start with the sympathetic feeling of the immediate site as the clearing of the best area of green foliage. We see the clearing of trees for the birth of the ACCC's project, as if a prune tree preparing for the seasonal growth and uplift. The architectural approach is simply using a structural module, branching out tree by replicating and bracing each other to create a forest-like complex. These structural modular systems gives flexibility to the programs and allows the canopy-like structure to hovering over the continuous outdoor landscape space beneath it. Vertical circulation to space above give also autonomous to each other, each individual program above. Voies within the canopy structure also create a narrower floor plate for sunlight penetration and provide a visual connection to the landscape. So, so, again, in order to the meet the nearly net zero energy building, first of all, we need to harness the resources around the site. So, in other words, we want to make sure that during summer, that our building somehow has a self-shading aspect, while in winter time, we can take advantage of the winter sun. We also make sure that, you know, we understand the airflow, such that we can take advantage of the natural ventilations. The landscape area also allow people to enjoy the nature, and then occupy the green spaces and so on. So, this is a schematic program organization. So, again, this is a concept, it's not for the final construction, but hopefully give you some idea of the key concepts. So, all the building volume will be elevated from the ground, open up the promenade, such that people can occupy the, you know, more protected semi-open space for different purpose. And all those enclosed programs are housed on the flooded volumes. So, if you look at the number one on the top image, it is Child's Care Center, and then to the north, the number two is for the Performance Hall. Three is the multi-museum and library, and volume four is a multipurpose hall. So, those are the clusters that I told you as a facility A, that is close to this town hall. And then the five and six are the clusters for the office. So, five will be occupied by the Chinese Commerce, the Chamber of the Commerce, and then the seven is for the restaurant, which is adjacent to the number eight is Culinary Art School, and then below will be occupied by the grocery, grocery store. So, you see the, you know, similar programs, they are adjacent to each. So you see the, you know, similar programs, they are adjacent to each other, taking benefits of the circulation of the goods. And then this is the sustainability integration. Again, we like to adopt the modular structural systems either made out of timber or the steels. They are able to grow or grow literally or the subtract per the program needs. And we like to also on the roof, we like to incorporate the photovoltaic systems to offset the energy consumption. And then the enclosures for the uplifted volume will be enclosed with the high-performance facades. In this case, we are thinking to use microalgae facade that are also good for the biofuel products, but this is again concept stage. And on the ground, there will be a multiple features such as water garden and green, green landscape that can be used for the different people's activities. So these are the moments of vignettes. Again, on the ground, we like to have truly visual connections and physical connections, people can freely occupy the ground. And then the restaurants, we have views to the landscape, water feature, and then the people outside can see what's happening inside the building. And the same thing, we like to house multi, the multi programs for the, the public engagement. And that's it for, for architecture explanations. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sorry. Pardon my being late. Do any of you have any questions? And if so, we'll probably start with Mike and work our way down.
I've visited with, with this group a number of times and, and so I'm, I don't have any questions.
All right. What about you, Mr. Morse?
Yes, I have a, a couple. Thank y'all for coming today. We really appreciate it. My, my first question is why Indian Trail and why the downtown area? Why specifically this location? And kind of a dovetail, are there any other locations that you've looked at in Indian Trail that might fit the, this particular project?
Why Indian Trail? I, I think it's a very booming town and it, it come a lot to the new commerce here. And I, I, I do think this is a welcome community. And also the economic development side is a great opportunity. That would reside with the, our Asian Chamber of the Commerce. We promote this kind of economic development. So, and this recite, resonate with us very well. We, we have been looking to a few of the other towns as well, not only in the Charlotte region, but also like in the Raleigh area as, as well. But I think that the town had a great leaders, especially like the economic development side, like Gary constantly talk with me and like the, almost like the, try to recruit our business, our chamber to come here. So I think it's a very welcoming community. That's the reason we wanted to do the partnership here.
And hypothetically speaking, if, you know, they're planning on light rail now between Belmont and it, excuse me, Matthews with it coming to Stallings and Indian Trail. If for whatever reason, the state decided not to bring light rail to this area, would that, would that jeopardize this project?
I, I think that the location itself is a very, very good. And the strategic location itself, I think in Indian Trail, especially like the, together with the town hall, it, it's a great place to be. And definitely this is a chicken and eggs story, right? And they want a quality mass in this area so that they can bring the light rail here. But on the other hand, if there's a light rail here, then this facility will be much more like the, having the big traffic as well, right? So my, my, my answer to this is that not only if we have this project here, regardless, we will do it. And also we will use our influence as well with the Charlotte city along with the state level and the federal level to try to bring the light rail in this place.
What is the estimated cost of this project when it's completely built out? And what is the timeframe for the build out?
The estimate budget, as we look into that is about like twenty, it's vary, okay? It depends on that how, what type of the features that the investors that we bring in will, will agreed on. But I think that it, it's range from twenty-five million to fifty million, that range.
And the timeframe?
This will be taking the face approach. And right now, I, I, I'm not sure that, it, it, it's a very like the preliminary type of the estimate. It could change due to like some of the support from the, the, the town, the county, as well as the state as well, and how soon that we can bring the investor together to do this. But I think that will, will, will pass like the two to five years that, that window.
Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
Well, first off, thanks for coming in. I mean, it's just a beautiful design. I mean, it's not like every day we get someone coming here that's got a photo voltaic roof design, so. Yeah, so that's pretty impressive. But the, and I'm looking at this, just a couple of questions is you have a concert hall and currently, we don't have a concert hall in Indian Trail. So my question is, is would things like the concert hall and they, and things like that be open for rental to the residents?
Oh, yeah. This actually is the facility we wanted to open for public. It's not the usage for just the Asian community. It's really for everybody. The local community, even the Charlotte region state, and even the national, like if they wanted to select this place to perform, then definitely we, we all welcome them.
Yeah, some local people might want to do some square dancing or something since you talked about northern and Chinese, you know? We, we didn't, we didn't get into the local culture, but anyway. But the next thing in this beautiful complex and all that, it looks like, I guess the chamber is nonprofit, so you're bringing in nonprofit and profit. So due to that is, you know, light rail's not been approved here, but you may do more to bring light rail than we can here with this complex. It may, it may be an enticement. I don't know, like you said, through the Tom Tillis and different other elected officials, it might help bring it here actually more than we can. But, but my next question is, I'm looking at all this fancy design and great buildings, it's impressive, but parking. I mean, we're gonna have to have parking and I, I don't see it in the design. I mean, how, how are we addressing that?
We already taking care of that. Mr. Sherry, you wanted to talk about that? It's because elevation is different, so.
Well, I don't want to park on a hill, but that's okay, go ahead.
Excuse, can, can you, excuse me, can you come to the mic, please? Thank you very much.
Yes, I think the site itself, from the high point to the low point, they have a ten, ten feet slope. So we kind of tried to, on the facility B side, which is the, the grocery side, we kind of tried to incorporate the, the ground surface parking together. And, and the site, the project we showed that project there, there's actually one parcel of the land we not included, although the city say we can take it for, include it for the development, then that would be icing on the cake. And in that way, we can use it to, to, to make it work. Cause giving the slope of ten feet, then we can incorporate the, the ground parking on the low side.
Do you have an estimate maybe of how many parking spaces you're talking about?
It really depend on the, the grocery we gonna produce. Usually the grocery we have, right now we proposing forty thousand square foot. Yeah, it is about, so we're gonna look up in the detail to incorporate all those kind handicap and accessory, yeah, parking, we need to.
Fourteen thousand square feet is usually about two hundred parking spots, right?
Yeah, I think, in general, I, I, I don't come up with my mind in the moment, but the things is, we can, we can able to incorporate those parking, include the daycare center sign, which is part of their children playground, we are not included for their side there. So we can also incorporate that as a ground surface parking to, to, for those kind of their teachers, daycare center teacher to use.
Well, thank you, you answered my question, thank you.
Sit, Ms. Shirley?
Yes, thank you for coming today. I was blown away when I saw some of these pictures in here. I couldn't believe it. If we can get something, even half of what you showed there, I think we'll be a happy town. You said it was a welcoming town and it is, it really is. I've been here about thirty-five years and when I moved here originally, my friends thought I was moving into the country and I wouldn't see them for days, but Ida Wall Road came in and connected us together and made it, made it what it's, it's doing right now. We should be at ninety thousand people, I think. Can somebody help me with that on the guesstimate on that? Say what?
Twenty fifty.
Twenty fifty, okay.
We're about forty-five thousand now.
Yeah, so you know the people are coming and the amount of building going on is, is, is just absolutely incredible. I'm sure you drove around the town to see what we had. How many acres would you need to, to pull this off?
I believe it's seven, seven acres.
Seven, okay. Well, that sounds, it's doable anyway, right?
Yeah, we, we have the architect doing a lot of the feasibility analysis, looking to the functions that we wanted to put in. Then they come up with the square footage and then to see how many lands needed to occupy, how many the parking space needed and then come up with this proposal.
It looks great and I hope we can work something out. Thanks, thanks again for coming to this evening for your interview.
Thank you.
All right, I have one question. And it's really the important question that we need to ask. The lands are owned by the town, right? How do you plan to acquire the land? What, do you have any, has this land been promised to you or has this land been, cause I see it's included, the site and so forth, there is nothing there right now. I think it's a good location for such a project, but what is the plan to acquire the land?
That's something I think we wanted to work together with the, the town and to see if there's something incentive that the town and also the county, even the state can provide us. As you know, that the Carolina Chamber, Chamber, Commerce is a nonprofit organization. And what we do is really assemble the resources, assemble the, the talents in the chamber along with the networks that we, we have, try to build this facility center in this town. So we need a lot of the helps. And also we will bring the, the investment community to, to facilitate this project. But I, I, I think that we need some type of incentive to acquire this land.
Okay. Anybody else has any, any, any other questions? No? It's six twenty-one now. Want to thank you for coming and presenting to us. I think what we'll probably do, Mr. Allen, is gather some feedback, some more feedback from the council and provide that to you, I guess, through Gary as well and kind of continue speaking in, on this particular item. But thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for the consideration. I hope this is a great opportunity that we can collaborate and being successful together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a break until six thirty.
All right. Are we going in closed session now?
We'll move that.
Not yet, not yet. For Tuesday, March tenth, twenty twenty. Just a point to note here, the mayor is usually the run, running the meeting, but unfortunately, he's not feeling well this evening, so he's asked me to step in and take over for him just for today. So I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our mission, our regard and the principle of liberty and justice around.
Please keep standing for a moment of silence. All right, you may be seated. Agenda additions and deletions. We have one addition, item, it's gonna be item four D. ABC Board Quarterly Update Presented by the Chairman of the ABC Board. That'll be item four D as in David. Any other additions or deletions? Oh, yeah. Item, that would be the sixth of all, but that's.
It's already on the agenda.
Right, just.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna move that one from six PM. We're gonna move it back to be item fourteen, closed session. It will be done after the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Presentations, new business. Do we have Deep Roots Yoga?
Yes.
So what we'll do is ask you to come up, tell us a little bit about your business, where you're located, and then we give you a little token of welcome to the town.
Thank you. So I'm Karen, this is Dennis. We opened the business together. We're at three one seven Indian Trail Road. We're in the same shopping center, Snowball Cabin and the barber shop and the laundromat. We met all the neighbors over there, we're very excited. Thank you for this opportunity to present today. Yoga is just important to us and we're excited to share it with the people of the town. Yoga means union and it's about bringing together union and harmony with the mind and the body. Like we just took a moment of silence, it makes you pause and realize what's important, quiet the mind, move the body, stretch, so you become over time more flexible and gather strength. And we're just really excited to share it with the community and we're happy to be here. Did I miss anything? Okay.
Well, welcome to the town and we wish you success in the new business.
Thank you.
And the town would like to present you with this here. You can come up.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Next up, we have Cole Fornus, Life Scout Troop Two Seventy-Six, Mr. Barber?
Oh, yes, before we get started here, Mr. Cole Fornus has done an Eagle project and he's gonna explain to us here in a minute. But he's part of Troop Two Seventy-Six here in Indian Trail. In case you don't know, the Boy Scout there in downtown Indian Trail in the Green Hut has been here over fifty years. They're an icon in the community. It takes over twenty-one merit badges and years to become an Eagle Scout. Eagle projects. Eagle projects, the Eagle himself has to raise their own money for the project. Not only that, there's been a lot of projects around town that Eagles have done that are always a community asset and entice our community. The stone landscaping around the Presbyterian Church was done by an Eagle Scout. The, um, playground at the, uh, one of the churches here was done by an Eagle Scout. They put up flagpoles around town. They, they've done a lot of things in the community that, that really enhanced our community. I know now they have a big fundraiser that's, that every year it's a barbecue, right? Of course, years ago, if, he's been here a long time, you might remember, they used to have a haunted house and haunted trail at the, uh, Boy Scout Hut. That was their big fundraiser years ago, and I admit, I was the gorilla in the woods, so. I still got the gorilla mask. I didn't bring it, I started to, but, you know, I didn't want to wind up on Facebook with that picture, so. The, uh, but anyway, I'm really excited to introduce, uh, this gentleman. The last thing they generally do before coming Eagle Scout is to have their Eagle project done and approved by the council. So I give you a wonderful gentleman, and he's done a long road, and it takes a, it takes a community to make an Eagle Scout. Your parents ought to be proud, the people, the troop ought to be proud, because I know it takes a lot of people who've been involved in you being here today. And of course, yourself, very proud of you. So go ahead, if you would, please, tell us about your project, Mr. Cole Fornus.
Thank you so much, sir. So as Mr. Barber said, I'm from Troop Two Seventy-Six, which is right around the corner down the street. My project, I call it the Mini Hut, which the building is called the Hut, and I built my project to kind of resemble the Hut, and it's right on the property. If you haven't seen it already, driving by, uh, it's, uh, three connected boxes, all in one structure. Kind of looks like a chicken coop. People told me that a lot. Um, but one of the boxes is a food pantry, another box is a free library, and then the third box is a place to put, uh, retired flags or old flags, so that the troop can retire them. And the food bank and free library boxes are completely open to the public. People could put in food donations if they want, and anyone in the surrounding community who needs those resources are completely open, uh, to taking anything they want and any help they need out of it. And, yeah. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Barber, for that presentation here. Um, we want to do the founding family recognition, the Hauser family. And I'm gonna read the certificate of recognition. Whereas longtime residents Stephen L. Hauser Senior and his wife Stacy, who are the descendants of Noah and Eunice Hauser, and Hiram, and Lily Mae Orr, respectively, have a notable history of community service and commitment to the town. Whereas Stacy, born and raised in Indian Trail, and Stephen Senior, having moved to the town around nineteen forty, married and raised two children, Marilyn and Stephen Junior, on their family farmland, which is now known as Chestnut Square Park. Whereas Stacy, the first female member of the Indian Trail Town Council, was recognized as an award-winning educator in North Carolina at both Indian Trail High School and Sun Valley High School, was a contributor of recipes to nationally circulated cookbooks, and was recognized as Indian Trail Presbyterian's Church's Woman of the Year, and is the granddaughter of James Ira Orr, one of the founding fathers of Indian Trail. Whereas Stephen Senior served as a teacher and coach of the Indian Trail High School Boys Basketball Team in the nineteen forties, and later worked as a teacher, principal, and guidance counselor in the Union County School System for thirty years, with many of those years serving at Sun Valley High School. Whereas at the beginning of World War Two, Stephen Senior joined the Army Air Corps, and after receiving orders to go to Europe, served as lead pilot in B seventeen bomber formations flying over Germany, and was awarded numerous medals of leadership and bravery during his thirty-five combat missions. Whereas after the war, Stacy and Stephen Senior returned to Indian Trail to continue the life they began. And Stephen Senior remained in the service as a member of the U.S. Air Force Reserve based in Charlotte, where he served as commander of the Charlotte Air Reserve Unit, and eventually retired with the rank of colonel. Whereas Stacy and Stephen Senior understood the importance of preserving the town of Indian Trail's history, and actively took part in helping the community grow and work to make the town a better place to live, work, play, and raise a family. Whereas the contributions and achievements of Stacy and Stephen Senior, as well as their children, Marilyn and Stephen Junior, and their families, have attributed to the growth, success, and well-being of the town of Indian Trail. And now, therefore, says I, Michael Alvarez, but I'll say Marcus McIntyre, acting mayor of the town of Indian Trail, along with the Indian Trail Town Council, hereby recognize Stacy and Stephen L. Hauser Senior as recipients of the town of Indian Trail's certificate of recognition in honor of Founder's Day, this tenth day of March, twenty twenty. Mr. Hauser, Hauser family, everybody can come up. Okay, item four D, ABC Board.
Councilmember McIntyre, um, you weren't going to public comments, were you?
No, I'm going to item four D. Mr. David Cohen, Chairman of the ABC Board, welcome, sir. No, no clapping.
I've never been up here, I don't think, before. It was a pleasure being here. Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tim McIntyre and Council. Thank you for having me. I'm gonna give you an update on the, uh, ABC Board. One of the things that, uh, you know, we talked about a long time ago, uh, when I was, uh, on council, was the openness from the ABC Board to the council, and we wanted to open it up and, and, and have everybody know what we're doing, and in turn, uh, you guys can not wonder what we're doing. But anyway, um, I, I wrote it all down because I was afraid I was gonna forget something, so I'm gonna read a good part of it, and then I'm gonna talk to you a little bit, but it won't last long. But, uh, the objective of tonight is to provide information and update to the Indian Trail Council as a courtesy to them in the effort to have more improved and open-minded communication between the ABC Board and the town. ABC Store has had a great two thousand nineteen, uh, which continues year after year. The growth and the trend is we're very proud, uh, of our store, and we're very proud to be able to give tax money and profits to the town. And I believe last year we gave somewhere, Jim?
Over three hundred thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the town. And basically, that's what we're here for, is to, uh, you know, be an alcohol provider and also to give all profits to the town. So, uh, the ABC Board considered numerous sites. We're getting ready to build a new store. And I think everybody up here is aware that, that we're wanting to build a new store. I think I've talked to, when I was on council, I explained to, that was one of the things that we wanted to do. So the ABC Board has considered numerous sites along Highway Seventy-four and the Monroe Road Quarter. The, the primary quarters, uh, the citizens of Indian Trail travel. The board selected a site on the going-home side of Monroe Road. Now let me explain that to you a little bit. The going-home side would be coming from Charlotte, coming back into Indian Trail. And the reason we did that, of course, that's gonna be a super street at some time, so it'll be easier access to, to pull off that side of the road. Now, uh, thank you, Kathy. I forgot about the, this up here, but behind you, and you guys are, I guess, are looking inside, or looking at your thing there, that is where the new store is gonna be. And, uh, there's a sign up there now. Has anybody seen that sign? Has anybody seen the proposed sign for the ABC Store on Monroe Road? It went up yesterday. Anybody seen it? You have seen it. You have seen it? Anybody else? Okay, so the sign, the sign is there. But if you're looking at that, if you're familiar, and I'm sure you are, with the bowling alley there on the proposed bowling alley, not proposed, but the bowling alley that was, you guys voted on and put there in the Family Fund Center. If you'll see that lot, or that, uh, ground right in front of it, is where the ABC Store is proposed to go. So, uh, that right there is a busy, 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 uh, corridor for, uh, people coming and going, and be a good place to put an ABC Store. We call that a hard corner, uh, that because it's got a road that goes down that side, and then there's a road that pulls in front of it, and it more or less sits on a corner there, which makes it even more, uh, you know, people can pull in and out and come into the, to the ABC Store a lot easier. So it's got a hard corner. That was another reason that we liked it. The parcel is surrounded, uh, by commercial development. It's all around it. We, we believe the site is in compliance with ABC Commission requirements. It has to be. That's why the sign is there. That sign has to be there, uh, thirty days, uh, and, uh, for approval. ABC Commission has to approve it. Uh, uh, we've, we've entered, entered in the new law enforcement contract with the Sheriff's Department. As you guys know, before, we were that, we were with A L E. Now we're with the, uh, Union County Sheriff's Department. Although, A L E will still be with us, because it's kind of like the Sheriff's Department is in, in the county. You're gonna watch out after us regardless of what we do. So A L E and the Sheriff's Department are now part of the ABC Store. We still have the continued support of the state A L E, as I just said. Board is engaged in architect firm, uh, to commence building, plan, design for the building. Uh, it's gonna be approximately seven thousand square feet. It'll be a building that the town will be proud of if you can, uh, show the building. And we can go back. Now that's not the exact, that is the, that is not the exact picture of the building, but that is what it, we want it to look like. We want it to have that, that face and look, look close to the same, uh, as, as this building right here. So it kind of fits in with the area that we have. Uh, it's, uh, I think it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a pretty building. It's gonna fit in real well. We have, uh, every intention of paying the loan off aggressively. Uh, we wanna, that's one of the reasons we wanted to open up a new store and, and create our own store. We have a down payment to put down on it, um, and we, uh, we wanna pay that thing off in, in seven to eight years, if we can. That way, we won't have a, uh, you know, we won't have a, a rent or a mortgage payment, I mean, a rent payment on it after that, so all proceeds will be going to the town. Store will ultimately be a, a large cash contributor to the town, to the law enforcement, to local education, and to other charitable organizations. We're very excited about it. We're very excited for the town to have the unique opportunity for current and future income, which will help towards town expenses and keep property taxes lower as a result. We've got some board members in here tonight, uh, Jim and Judy. Uh, both are on the board, work very hard. I think you know who they are. They do a fantastic job for us, and they're very helpful in the team of doing this. We also have Wes Henson, who is a real estate attorney, who's, who's helping us do this. Wes couldn't be a better person to do this. He's very knowledgeable, uh, with the real estate and building. Uh, Rick Turner also is, uh, lives in the town of Indian Trail, and he's, uh, been involved in building more than two hundred ABC stores. So we're very fortunate to have Rick Turner helping us too. Uh, so we have not only a good team, but we have a great team. We're estimating, uh, building costs to be somewhere around, uh, not exact, but somewhere around two point three million. That's for about a se, as I said, seventy, seven thousand, seventy-five hundred square feet. It should not take any rezoning, uh, or planning staff, as I was looking to see, uh, but, but no planning staff. And it just requires, uh, council approval, and this would be after, of course, I'm, I'm sure we have public comment and that type thing. And the sign now that sits out there has a telephone number for people to call, and so we can answer any questions, anything they might want to know about what, when, where, we'll be glad to answer. So, uh, with that being said, I think I covered everything that I wanted to cover. Do you have any questions?
Council, do you have any questions? If you do, we're gonna start with, uh, Ms. Howe, and walk our way down. We'll start with you, Shirley.
Well, David, I don't know what to say to you at this point, but, uh, if David's involved with it, it will be a very successful liquor store. And I'll leave it go at that.
Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
No, I think the idea of a second store is a great idea and great, you know, revenue generator for the town. And I, I, I think the location is good. If a long-term Baptist that owns that land don't have a problem with it, I don't either. So that's all I have. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Morse?
So you mentioned, uh, last year, we were getting, you know, contributions of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. What does that look like going forward?
As I have discussed with council, uh, and I did this while we were on council, uh, of course, we gave much more than the required minimum, uh, with the ABC Board. Uh, we wanna, we, we want to, we're gonna go back to the required minimum and give back to the town. And, uh, the main reason we wanted to do that, and, you know, I, I have nobody to, to blame but myself. While I was on council, I kind of wish, I don't kind of wish, I wish we would have just required, uh, minimum, especially because of the idea of a new ABC Store has been in the works for two or three or four years. And, uh, the reason, the biggest reason I think we need to do that is for every dollar that we give more than the minimum is just money that we're gonna have to turn around and pay interest to a bank on, which means the town ultimately will get less money in the end. And we are solely here to, uh, give money to the town. So in the long run, it's much better to pay the minimum now, and then in seven or eight years from now, the fruits will really come around. So less, less money now, much more money later.
Was there ever a feasibility study done?
No, there's no, I don't, I don't think in a, in a feasibility, feasibility study, um, no. I, I, the only study that I know that we did was, was amongst the board itself. And amongst the board, we had Rick Turner, who I, I've already, uh, told you about, built two hundred stores. We had Wes Henson, who's a real estate attorney, uh, and they don't, you don't get much more expertise than that. But then we, we did, went to the town, uh, I think, uh, Jim did, I think you went to the town and asked the town for basically a feasibility study, did you not?
I did, uh.
Come on.
I actually met with council in closed session at one time and entered into a partnership with the county council on behalf of the ABC Board. And the thought process there was if we did a feasibility study, uh, the town of Indian Trail's planning department had a lot of data, and which our former manager agreed to, uh, that he would be a good conduit to get that information. Basically, before we got that all started, my chairman here and Wes were out looking at land. at land and presented the land to us. It was so adaptable for our needs. That whole side of the community does not have customer service, good customer service, and that's what the ABC store and board is about. We wanted to deliver, I'm sorry, I'm preaching.
You're doing a good job, too.
We wanted to deliver good customer service to that area of town, afraid that we are personally losing customers who will go all the way to Monroe, or stop in Mecklenburg, or go to Waxall, from that side of the town. So that's, that's one of the good reasons that we picked that area. It's one, it's part of our feasibility study that you were asked.
So did the, did the town actually deliver some kind of information back to the, to the board, to the ABC board?
No.
So, okay. The other question I have is that particular piece of property that came before us for a rezoning, was this already known that there was going to be a potential ABC store on that piece of property?
No, no. I don't think it had to be. No, we didn't know. I mean, how, how are we going to present it to you if we don't know it's going to be it? We didn't, we didn't decide to put an ABC store there, what, until?
Three, four months ago.
So there would have been no way, there would have been, or we had talked about an ABC store, but we didn't have a location for an ABC store. We could have put it anywhere. So I think that would have been an impossibility.
Okay, is that Mr. Moser's property?
It is.
Are you a consultant for Mr. Moser?
No.
You're not?
I'm not.
Okay.
Can I ask you why you asked that question? Beg your pardon?
I said, sure.
I'm asking.
Oh, the, why I asked if you were a consultant?
Yeah, yeah.
I had been told that you were a consultant for two of the developers here in Indian Trail. So I was just trying to determine if that's one of them.
I was just curious why you asked that question.
Also on the UDO, is Brandy here? Is she back?
Brandy's downstairs at the county comprehensive workshop.
Right. Can you table that question to Brandy for another time? That way, you can ask her and get that answer.
Yeah.
But I mean, continue with your questions, of course.
The question is, is does the ABC store comply with the existing UDO?
That's a question that we would have to ask Brandy.
Give me two seconds, I have it pulled up.
Okay, Karen can give you an answer then. You have any other questions in the interim while Karen pulls it up?
Just a couple more. Do you know what the statuses of the state's private, excuse me, privatization bill?
No, I do not. I mean, I do know, and Jim here, come on, this is your expertise on this. Oh, you, you, come on.
As we all well know, that there is legislation in the House that is currently in a committee, the ABC Commission Committee, that is looking at privatization of spirit stores within our community. That bill is still under consideration or under construction. There is a short session coming up, starting in April. I don't believe that bill will be in that session. It may be in the next year's legislation. There are some troubling things in that bill in regards to spirit sales in North Carolina. I won't go into them at this point, but that's why it's still under construction. It does have opposition. Of course, you realize that the ABC board likes the current model of selling alcohol in Indian Trail. I hope I'm not speaking out of place. So, but that's where that particular issue is.
And I think we're years away from privatization, and I think Jim would probably agree with that, and I know Judy does. And one of the things that we talked about in privatization, that if, if it ever did happen, and it's, let's say, it happens in three years from now, or four years from now, I think we'd have the best, best piece of real estate of anywhere in privatization, because we'd have an ABC store right there, where if someone were smart, would probably want to buy that store for a whole lot of money and make it an ABC store, or that type store. So we think it's a, it's a no lose, a no lose situation there. So regardless, privatization came three, four, five, six, seven years down the road, and a good possibility that it'll never come, but if it did, that's my opinion of it anyway.
Ms. Walter, you have an answer?
I do have an answer. The parcel is zoned, general business district. ABC stores are allowed in that district, as well as in the village overlay area that this is, this falls under. There is a UDO process to, regarding an ABC store, and I believe that's happening tonight. So the local ABC store has submitted a permit, which is basically a letter from the ABC Commission informing the town of the ABC local board's chosen site. This board has the ability to vote whether or not they like the site and want the facility to be there. If the vote is a, the majority says no, then the town holds a public hearing on the matter, and a new vote is taken. The result, and the town will draft a resolution. That goes to the ABC Commission. The ABC Commission has ultimate authority and can overrule the town's decision regarding location of that ABC store, even if this council at some point does vote to ask the ABC Commission that not to allow the store in that location.
Does there need to be a public hearing prior to that?
No, only if this, only if this council by majority votes that are ops, not, or votes that they do not want the locate, the store in that location by majority.
Thank you, thank you both.
That's all your questions, sir? Mr. Head?
I have none.
All right. Mr., Mr. Cohen?
David.
Thank you very much for your time, sir.
It's my pleasure, my pleasure being here tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir? Unless if anybody has any other questions, I think we gave the board, any of you have? No, I think that's it, too. It's one of, it's one of the shorter meetings, right?
That's right.
So we'll move on to public comments, but nobody has signed up, so I'm going to open and close public comments. But let me just say something in general. For those of you in the audience, if anytime you want to speak at a town council meeting, prior to the meeting starting, you go up to the clerk there, Ms. Quinn, please raise your hand. This is our town clerk. She can, she will add your name to the list, and you'll come up here, and you'll be able to speak for three minutes on any topic that you deem necessary. There are some rules around that, but just for future reference, if you want to ever speak at the town council meeting, that's the process we follow, all right? Captain James, you're up, sir.
Good evening, counsel. I laid the packets there in front of me from the month of February, and just to briefly, nothing a great big difference from the month of January or month of December. We're still sticking around that 230, 250 a month mark in reportable incidents. A little over 800 business checks for the month, and then a little over 1,000, almost 2,000 preventative patrols conducted during the month. Our crashes continue to sway down during the month of February, still sticking around that, between that 50 and 70 number. But we are with that enforcement project that we're working now. We're still trying to find a perfect model to model their hours and the way they are working, but the, we're still getting that number to work its way down. Our community resource cars, I'd like to speak about them for just a minute, and to let you know, it's not a continuous issue, but parking is a hot button issue within the town. We have delegated one person, Officer Henry, within our community services, to be that contact person to work with the HOAs and the communities to actually try to, try to help the HOAs in working out the parking issues that they are dealing with. He does that every day. So like we have been doing, if you do have a constituent that reaches out to you wanting or trying to deal with an issue, please forward that to me, and we'll let Mike get on it. He's, he's done really, really well, and done exactly what we've asked him to do. And then for the month, a little over 4,200 events for the month, which is sticking around that 4,000 number. We are, we are losing Sergeant James Goblin on Friday. He's been promoted to, still at the rank of sergeant, but transferred into the narcotics division. We are gaining back an old contract officer that was here years ago, that's been, he's currently a patrol sergeant on Charlie Squad. Sergeant Ryan Tomlin is coming back, and he is as excited as he can be to be coming back to the trail. So look forward to welcoming him on Saturday. Other than that, we don't have anything else for you. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Captain James? Thank you, Captain James. Moves us to the consent agenda. Any changes, or everybody in agreement? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Head has made the motion. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have no public hearings this evening, right? No old business? And that brings us to new business appointment of ABC member, seat four. The term will expire 3/30/2022. One of the things I did is that I called Ms., called our town clerk to get some information as to the applicants. There were two applications submitted, and based on that, I don't know if any of you have any discussion, but I'd like to make a motion. So before I do, don't know if any of you have any questions? All right. I'd like to make, well, actually, Mr. Cohen, can you introduce Mr. Lucarelli? Because I am going to make a nomination. I am going to nominate him, sir. Can you?
Okay, since I recommended Mr. Lucarelli, I've known him for many years, and I've known him because I'm in the food business, and he's in the food business. And I think the first time I ever ran into you is you were with Quaker State Lou, walked in the business, and you were there, and I tried to sell him stuff, but he didn't buy it. So I liked him anyway. So to make a long story short, he's, he's got a great reputation in the food business. He, I thought he'd be the ideal candidate, because I believe if you read his application, I think you're in charge of 15 liquor licenses and 16. If you'd ever been to, what was it you had in South Park that I never went to that was so good?
The Cowfish.
The Cowfish. He was executive chef for Cowfish, opened them up all over the country. He, he's, knows a lot about the business. Other than that, I think he's an extremely good fellow. He's got a great family, and I think he'll serve the ABC board very well. And David, if you'll stand up, this is David Lucarelli, this is who I've recommended. If you have any questions for David, he, I'm sure he'd, he'd like to.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Lucarelli?
I have one. Regarding the licenses, are any of those licenses with any of the businesses here in Indian Trail?
Yeah, I've just won the Subor Latin Street Grill in, in the, I'm posed by Walmart. We, I don't operate that particular unit that's operated by a franchisee, so he holds that liquor license.
So there wouldn't be any conflict?
No.
Anything?
All right. So with that being said, I'd like to nominate Mr. David Lucarelli for the ABC board member, seat four, with a term expiring on 3/30/2022. All those in favor? All those opposed? Mr. Morse, I didn't see your hand go up or down, sir.
I'm in favor.
All right, so that would be unanimous. Mr. Lucarelli, thank you for signing up, sir, for, to serve on this board. The ABC board is, I guess, right now, you can, from what Mr. Cohen said, is in a period of expansion. It's good when, you know, citizens who live in the town, or residents, I should say, live in the town, volunteer for various boards that we have, you know, coming to serve. It's, it's one of the ways of giving back, but thank you, sir, for coming tonight. Mr. Walter, which I know you were on the board, sir, and I want to personally take time out to tell you, thank you for your service. You were sort of wearing two hats there, and that is not always an easy thing, but I want to commend you for your service, for, let's just say, the last year that you've been on there. I do appreciate it, do appreciate all your service to the town, sir, so thank you very much. Mr. Cohen?
And I may say also, Jim, as you know, we all miss you. We, you did a great job.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Cohen. All right. Mr. McLamb, stormwater maintenance contract.
Good morning, good evening, mayor and council. This should be really quick. So we got our bids back a couple of weeks, about a week, a little over a week ago, for the stormwater maintenance contract we had in your packet. They were between roughly 130,000 and 325,000. So after checking references, we're recommending to go with the low bidder, and that's a Qualis. We've never worked with them before, so it'll be a new company for us to work for.
Any questions for Mr. McLamb?
This, the 129,000, 130,000 for round number, does include the alternate, which is Third Avenue.
Okay, so that's included in there?
It does include the alternate, yes, which is Third Avenue.
Any questions for Mr. McLamb? No? Just one question. Based on the stormwater cleanup that we're doing now, when we get heavy rains, that's going to help in terms of reducing some of the flooding that we see, right? Not everything, but in certain areas, right?
Yes, so what we've done the last couple of years with this maintenance contract is it's been more floodplain maintenance. So it's been, three years ago, we started in the northernmost portion, so that's everything north of Seacrest Shortcut. Last year, we did the middle portion between Seacrest Shortcut and Old Monroe Road, and then this year, this is to do all the creeks south of Old Monroe Road. It's about nine miles, so this will clean those creeks, some catch basins.
And Third Avenue.
And Third Avenue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McLamb. Appreciate it, sir.
So we, I need a motion to?
Oh, so we, yeah, sorry, that's my fault. It says action. So I'd like to get a, I'd like to, if you, one of you would make a motion for the stormwater maintenance contract for fiscal year 20.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater contract for fiscal year 2020.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One second. Mr. Hunsinger?
All right, as you can see on the agenda, it says potential action, but the reason it says that is we got our bids back today at 2:00 for the U-5987 Sardis Roundabout Project. Again, we've been advertising this project for the last three weeks. We had a pre-bid meeting March 3, and with about six contractors. We had the bid today and got five bids, and so the low apparent bidder is 3.6 million. Our engineer estimate came in at 3.5 million, so we did pretty well on that. The project is approved for up to 3.7 million, so we stayed underneath the budget as far as the approved dollars from the feds. So making a recommendation to y'all to approve me going, moving forward with, getting, executing the contract with Boggs Paving, which is right now the apparent low bidder. Again, DOT still has to approve all this as well, but I need this to move forward so I can submit it to DOT, because they need it for their records.
Will, will that keep us on, on target with our start and complete, complete date right now?
Yes, as long as DOT moves forward with their approvals, the plan was to start the project April 1, and so again, as long as they move fairly quick in the next week or so, it's just, should still happen.
Any questions for Mr. Hunsinger, counsel? No? About you? No? All right, so.
I'll make the motion.
Yep.
I hereby move that the town council of Indian Trail accept the bid received by Boggs Paving Incorporated as the lowest responsible bid for the Sardis Church Road Roundabout Project U-5987 in the amount of $3,676,473.38, and that contingent upon approval of this bid by the NC DOT, the town authorizes staff and the town attorney to take any action necessary to effect the contract with Boggs pursuant to the terms included in the bid documents.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Hunsinger. Thank you, Mr. Huntsinger. There's no discussion item? All right. Managers update, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Thank you. Thank you. Just a few brief items to keep council up to date on a few things. Couple of things that, just for information, and a couple of things that'll be coming to you in future board meeting. First thing is the Old Monroe Road widening project. This week, Mr. Huntsinger received the proposed agreement from NC DOT for the town share of the right-of-way cost for this project, which is $5 million. We're going to get the town attorney to review the agreement, and then that'll be on the March 24 agenda for your consideration and action. We have a short timeframe. In order to get this before the DOT board in their April meeting, we have to have the agreement executed by April 2. And then, the way that the payment is structured in the agreement, we have to submit the first payment of $1 million along with the executed agreement. So, that means in the current fiscal year, and Jim is aware of this, we would have to submit $1 million. There would be no payment due next fiscal year, the one, the budget that we're currently working on right now. There'd be a $1 million payment due July 2021, and then the three subsequent Julies after that. The, as part of that, not part of the agreement, but part of the statutory requirements, DOT is also going to be required to commit half of that amount, 2.5 million, back to the town for a future roadway project, and that's a statutory requirement. The only other thing is that the town will be required to contribute to any betterments for the project, and the only betterment that we're aware of is increasing the size of the five-foot sidewalk standard to the 10-foot multi-use path. We think our share, the town's share, will be 20% of that cost, but Todd's going to get that confirmed prior to bringing the agreement before you on the 24th, so you'll know, you know, what our share of any potential betterments would be. Any questions?
Yeah. On betterments, would that include, like, mass polls instead of traditional telephone polls? Todd?
I think so. Todd, is that...
From my verbal conversations on the phone with the gentleman that came up with the municipal agreement, right now, all they see, foresee as a betterment is the sidewalk, nothing else.
Sorry. Are there other things categorized that could be in betterments?
It could be, but they're not going to ask the town to contribute to those betterments.
Okay.
It's just a sidewalk. Again, that was verbally stated on the phone to me. Now, it could change, but that's what I was told.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you. Couple of other items. The First Avenue Stormwater Retention Facility, that's the stormwater pond that'll be built there, that has to be done before we actually do the improvements on First Avenue. Mr. Huntsinger also today got a notification that NC DEQ has approved the erosion control permit. That was the last thing he needed to go ahead and move ahead with bidding, so he'll go ahead, prepare for those bids to go out for that project. The automated front door at Town Hall for improved handicap access, the wiring has been taken care of. Mr. McLamb has had the mechanism. That's all ordered. It's being fabricated right now. Hopefully, that'll be installed within the next two to three weeks. Also, Mr. McLamb has advised that litter pickup, that has already been completed, the litter pickup contract that council approved at the last meeting, that's already been completed. And he actually has the details on the volume and all that, and we can provide that to council if you're interested in the volume of litter that was picked up. Two other, a couple of minor things. Medical insurance. Ms. Warner has gotten some really good news that the town will not have any increase in its hospitalization major medical insurance for this upcoming budget year, which that's rare, as you probably know from experience. So, no increase in the major medical. There'll be no increase in vision coverage and a small increase in the dental coverage premiums. And just a few staff changes. Susan, I would say DDA, but DDA is not right. What is it?
Didier.
Didier, sorry. Susan Didier has transferred from Parks and Recreation, a lateral transfer, down to Tax Office, and she's the new administrative assistant in the Tax Office there, greeting the public and so forth. And we're advertising Hayden is to fill her position in Parks and Recreation. And then, we have, I'm happy to announce, we've hired someone to fill the vacant accounting position in Jim's office and the vacant planner position in planning. So, both those folks have been hired and will be coming to work shortly. And that's all I have, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you. Council comments?
All right. Mr. Barber?
Hello. Closing conference. Woke me up. So, I'd just like to thank Abby Ball and all the people who did the newsletter that came out. That was a great newsletter. I mean, just really informative. I mean, I just, you know, so that was good, as my wife got it in the mail and let me know, so it was good. So, the next thing is, want to give a shout out to all the Boy Scouts in the area and the troop leaders. I'm so old that I like to thank my parents. They actually bought my first camping gear with green stamps. Remember those? You go to the green stamp store? So, that's how I got my first start in Scouts. But, so I'd like to thank my parents for doing that, and I'd like to thank everybody coming out, and like to thank for the ABC Board update, and appreciate everybody and the town staff doing a good job, and thank you for the update. Thank you. Have a blessed evening.
Mr. Morse?
Yeah. Thank you, David, for presenting tonight. That's very welcomed. And thank you, everyone, for coming out, attended the meeting, and I hope you guys have a safe week and have a good night.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you very much. I want to say, yes, Mr. Barber stole my thunder a little bit, but the newsletter was really good. Actually, I put it on my wife's computer, so she can kind of see some of the things going on in town and some of the dates, so that's pretty good. The way that you guys tied it in with the Parks and Recs Department, so that we know what's coming up. Like, on the 20th, we have a sort of jazz event coming up, I think, on March. So, hopefully, we will not be in any quarantine situation. We got to keep that in mind, but if not, if we're not, hopefully, I can get out there on a Friday night. Staff, as always, I appreciate all of you. Audience, thank you very much for coming. Mr. White, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for your time. Mr. Lucarelli, welcome to the ABC Board. Working with David, I know you're going to have a hard time there, but I'll pray for you. Captain James, as always, thank you for your service, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you for your response. Ms. Quinn, thank you for your, for keeping us in line there, making sure that we have all the information we need. And everybody have a safe ride home. Thank you.
Ms. Howe?
Yes, this evening, I'd like to mention that my daughter is here from Tennessee, and they've been helping me out around the house, which I really appreciate. I wasn't Mrs. Clean as good as I thought I was, I think. And David, this is one, say it again, I missed you, not that it affects you.
It's okay. It's okay. I know.
But I missed the wind coming by my face when you were talking. Yes.
She almost got hit a couple of times.
Yeah. I could tell. So, when you saw me scooting back a little bit, that wasn't for the stretch of my legs, that was to make sure I wasn't hit. But anyway, it was a good meeting. We have closed session today?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and weather is going to be hopefully nice the rest of the week, so 71 degrees, somebody said tomorrow, so I have to go out and clean in the yard a little bit, but I'm going to like that. It was a good meeting, and it went smoothly, and I was happy to see that, too. But everybody be safe, and that's all I have. Thank you.
And Mr. Head?
And for brevity reasons, ditto, ditto, ditto. Thanks, everybody for coming. Drive home safe. Have a good evening.
All right. And in accordance with NCGS 143-318-11, consult with attorney, we're going to go into closed session. Can I get a motion?
Sound moved.
All right. Motion is unanimous. Let's go. Abby, we're live. All right. I need a motion. I have a motion there, Abby.
Again?
I'm going to make a motion that we, that the council and the mayor pay revert back to the rates as of December 31, 2019, and that the new rates take effect as of July 1, 2020. All in favor?
Not very.
All right. That would be unanimous. I need a motion to close, to end this meeting, to adjourn. All those in favor? All right. Ms. Howe made the motion, and motion is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. What a great evening.